So let's start. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Kephart.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge my allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I was missing the flag, so it threw me off a little bit there. All right, so just to thank you all for joining us, for those who could join us virtually. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, typically engaged lives. And as always, we'll start out with a report from our superintendent, Dr. Rob Anderson.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, members of the board. It's the night before the first day of school, so a little bit of a different first day of school, certainly. We know that we'll be working remotely tomorrow, but still very, very excited, just so proud of our team, all the work they've done to get prepared for this moment. I'm excited for our kids, excited for my own kids who'll be going back to school tomorrow. And so just want to encourage everybody, even though you may not be going back in person, still get a good night's rest, wake up, eat a good breakfast, and get ready to learn. So we're very excited to be back and learning tomorrow. We'll be giving the board a thorough update on the first day of school and reintroduction update during information items. So this is the first thing I wanted to speak to. The second is a really exciting announcement. It's an honor that the district just recently received that we learned, I believe it was late last night, early this morning, that Forbes Magazine has recognized the Boulder Valley School District as the top employer in the state of Colorado. We think that's just a wonderful, a wonderful recognition to the hard work of our district and of our leaders to create just an amazing culture for employees to be able to work and thrive. The ways, the way that Forbes Magazine determines this is based on a surveying of employees. They're anonymous surveys, and so these are, you know, so folks are really, really honest. They ask questions around a variety of criteria, including safety of work environment, competitiveness of compensation, opportunities for advancement, how much an employee would be willing to recommend their place of work to others as a place that they may want to work. And so number one in the state of Colorado is certainly quite an achievement, just very proud of that, and just, I think, speaks to the culture that this board, that our team have worked really, really hard to cultivate, which is one of shared decision-making, one of mutual respect, and one that's focused on all students. And so very proud to announce and share that. We'll be sending, I believe, a press release out to the greater public tomorrow, but wanted to just start the evening with some good news. And so that's all I have for superintendent's comments.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Anderson? Okay. Thumbs up from Richard? All right. Great. Our next item is public participation. So we value public participation, and of course, it's changed in our virtual environment. So we had asked people who wanted to speak to the board to sign up by two or three o'clock, oh, I'm sorry, by noon today. And we ask, and you would do that by calling the board secretary Laura Schaefer, so that's how you would do that if you want to participate in the future. And just as a reminder, as always, we really do read all of our emails. I have read every single one, I'm pretty sure. And that's another way you can communicate if you can't take the time or you feel uncomfortable speaking in the virtual environment or in person when we go back to person, hopefully soon. So we just ask that you confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. We'll start with speakers on agenda items and then go to speakers on non-agenda items. We ask that you limit your presentation to two minutes. And we ask that you recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes pre-K through 12 students. So you'll see a yellow card in Laura's box when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, she'll hold up an orange card. At that time, we'd ask you to wrap up your comments, and you can continue your thoughts via email if you felt that the end of your presentation was important. Just send it by email and we'll all read it. So our first speaker is Carrie Mack, and excuse me if I mispronounced that.
That's okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for reading and responding to the email that I did send, and I was encouraged to speak to you here tonight. And I know that this is unprecedented time, and these decisions for you are really, really challenging, and I absolutely respect that. I just wanted to speak to you as a parent who is an essential employee, and the challenges that come along with that without kids being in school is exponential. And I would just like to request, and I know this is beyond you, it gets into the union, but that teachers are essential as well. And I love and value our teachers, and I understand that they are being put at risk, but we in the community are also being put at risk by having to do our jobs. I've spoken to parents who put their kids into Thorn and other programs costing up to $1,500 a month, and I'm just not able to do that. And my question that comes in is why can we offer full-day SAC and full-day care for kids, but we can't offer in-person learning? So there just seems to be kind of gray areas there as far as kids can be there for paid programs, but kids can't be together for in-person learning. So that's just the piece that I'm having a really tough time with. It seems those parents who are willing and able to pay money to have their kids in school care or other programs or tutoring are able to do that for their children, and I'm just not able to do that. And I'm not a teacher. I didn't sign up for this, and I think my kid's education is going to suffer, as well as other kids within the district, and that's pretty sad to me. And I, again, I understand how hard this is. I just wanted you to hear from a struggling parent who really doesn't have any answers, just sharing my experience thus far. And I appreciate all of you and what you're doing, I really do. Thank you so much.
Okay, Karen Sacks.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Katie, you can hear me, okay. So just in case I run out of time, I want to thank the board very quickly for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Tonight, I wanted to speak about the reintroduction plan, particularly when the hybrid phase begins, which currently, I believe, is phase three. Currently, as I understand it, the plan allows for the students to be grouped into two groups, A and B. A and B will both be in classroom four days, either in person or streaming the other two days. So with being in the classroom for four days, I would like to know when they are going to be expected to complete the online coursework that they'll have simultaneously, and when the teachers are going to be able to find the time to manage, to prepare. I know you have Monday set aside for that, but this is an ongoing thing throughout the week. They'll have to continue to manage that, and I'm speaking as a parent, not a teacher, as well as, you know, help the students that are struggling with the online coursework, whatever. My other concern is, so the first concern is how pragmatic or how practical that is. I just don't feel, I don't see it there. The other is that in terms of safety, I feel like the plan overlooked the risk of cross-contamination. By having Group A come in Tuesday and Wednesday to campus and then followed by Group B just 17 hours after Group A has been there, you have the risk of cross-contamination. I don't have the time right now to educate anybody about what cross-contamination is, but let's say that it's ineffective. So I'm proposing that instead the groups alternate two-week periods of either in-person learning or remote learning, because then they don't have to switch gears every day, and they can get the work and the coursework done. And then in terms of safety, it allows for the CDC's period, the CDC has established that there's a period of two to 14 days from infection with COVID-19 to the onset of symptoms. So if one group, there was an outbreak, the other group wouldn't be affected because they would effectively already be quarantined doing the remote learning at home. And I think that faculty should be divided into two groups as well.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Farrell.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mike Farrell, and I'm just going to dive in because I only have two minutes. I believe that starting kindergarteners in Phase One online learning will cause irreparable harm to kindergarteners. It's unreasonable to place a kindergarten in front of a computer and expect them to maintain their attention for four hours per day. BVSD has painted all students in K through 12 with a broad brush managing online school, while students in kindergarten have very different educational and social, emotional needs from students in 12th grade. BVSD should consider the age-specific needs of students in response to COVID-19 and offer school in different phases for elementary school, middle school, and high school students. I'm just going to move down to my second point here. The deserved decision to begin school in Phase One online learning for health and safety reasons doesn't make sense in light of the fact that BVSD will be offering in-person childcare during school hours through SAC. Third point, everyone in the community expects, is reasonably relied upon, public education to necessarily include childcare during school hours. In grades K through 12, childcare during school hours is part and parcel of education. Education and childcare are inextricably enmeshed. BVSD's attempt to separate education from childcare by offering online-only learning is an abuse of its discretion and is particularly harmful to students in elementary school. I'm going to say BVSD's decision to begin school in Phase One online learning has a disparate impact on low-income families, minorities, essential workers, and their children. Certain professions like firefighters, nurses, doctors, et cetera, that don't have the option to work from home and charging additional $800 per month to these workers causes them additional stress and challenge facilitating, and challenge getting their children to and from school. Many lower-income families in Boulder County may not qualify for free or reduced lunch, but they still be barely making ends meet, given the high cost of living in Boulder County. Further, many of these lower-income workers work in sectors of the economy that necessitate in-person work, for example, work in the food industry. While wealthier families form pods, microschools, hire teachers and tutors so their children don't fall behind academically, lower-income families of Boulder County will accumulate debt, lose all discretionary income, and have their children fall behind academically as a result of online-only learning. BVSD's decision to offer online-only learning has directly led to the system of inequity and disproportionately affects low-income and minority families. Thank you.
Thank you. Susanna Hernances.
Sir, hi. Can you hear me? Thank you for allowing me to talk. I'm a mother of a BVSD student. I live in Superior. I'm here to echo what many people are saying, many parents in our community. We believe that public education should be considered an essential service. Remote learning is ineffective for all children, but especially for elementary school children. BVSD has come up with the one solution fits all when other school districts are implementing different solutions for elementary, middle, and high school. This, we are also addressing this crisis as if it were temporary, but sadly, this virus has become endemic. It's going to be here for years to come, even after a vaccine is available, years afterwards will continue to have outbreaks. We all understand the issue that teachers don't feel safe, and that's why we, parents, are begging you that you find a way of implement the safety measures laid out by our public health officials to make these teachers feel safer. I don't know how to solve that problem, because there is no zero-risk solution. If we, if our schools remain closed for in-person this one school year, they may stay closed two years, three years, five years. How long are we going to keep them closed? The virus is here to stay, sadly. This crisis is highlighting the inequity in our system. Parents hiring private teachers, creating their own private schools, while many families are left behind. I do want to thank all those brave childcare workers that are going to take care of our kids, but it is very ironic that you are welcoming us to send our children to the public school where they were supposed to be taught yes to be watched. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Dean.
Hello. My name is James Dean. I am a disabled parent. My son is 12 years old, soon to be 13, goes to Manhattan Middle School. My son has an IEP. Over the summer, since the shutdown of school last year, my son has, since he's not been able to go to school or be around anything, has talked about suicide on numerous occasions. I am worried about my son's mental health, as well as his health of being at school, being around people. He has more of a risk of falling off his skateboard than he does of catching this stupid virus. Why can't we have them in school? Surely there's something that the school board, or the schools, or the teachers can do to put our kids' safeties first. My son, I fear, is at risk of falling so far behind academically that by the time he gets to high school, he's not going to have a clue which way is up or which way is down. Surely we can take the stupid politics out of this and put our kids first. It's not just me saying this. I have talked to well over 50 other parents from his school as well as through our church, and all of us are saying the same thing. Our kids are suffering. Now, I'm disabled, so I have the advantage of being home with my son, but today's schooling is so hard that I can't help him at home. I simply cannot help him. And it's not, again, this isn't just me as a parent. It's, a lot of us are saying the same thing. I beg you, put our kids back in school. Thank you for listening to me, and thank you for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you. And our last speaker, who's speaking on a non-agenda item, is Michael Gedda.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so thank you to the board for having me here tonight, for Donna Myers for encouraging me to sign up to speak at this board meeting, and thank you for the pledge of allegiance. I sincerely, I love that, and I sincerely hope that's happening in every classroom every day. I'm just going to read an email I had sent to Mr. Anderson. He wrote in his most recent letter, "While the Black Lives Matter protests have faded, I want you to know that BVSD has continued its work. This is quite concerning. BLM, closely associated and marauding with Antifa, is a domestic terrorist group using violence against peaceful and unarmed citizens and eluding destruction of businesses, homes, and municipal buildings as one of its primary tools of anarchy and violent change. Dr. Martin Luther King, the greatest civil rights activist of all time, who in his own words used Gandhi's nonviolent tactics to achieve all that he did, would be appalled at their behavior and condemn their actions. For the superintendent of my son's school expressing pride at continuing the work of such a violent organization, which has done and will do nothing to improve the lives of Black or any other people, is deeply disturbing. Also, your assertion that BLM's violent protests have faded is completely and unfortunately false. Our riots, attacks on police, and ordinary citizens, including children, continues, even in Denver this week, as well as nationally. So this is what this misguided equity program is about. I want my family to have nothing to do with it." The great actor Morgan Freeman was asked how to end racism in the United States. His brilliant, simple, and accurate answer was to stop talking about it, to pretend that we live in a racist country, which is actually one of the least racist in the world, and teach that dribble to our kids, as another reason to hate and feel guilty about living in this great country is a great disservice to these young minds, or any minds that matter for that matter. All lives matter. And I think that's about the end of my time. I would just echo the words of the other parents. We need to reopen the schools now. There is no science, no evidence, no data from anywhere in the world that supports online learning for children. All of the data from Europe clearly consistently shows no detrimental effects in terms of morbidity or mortality from fully opening schools. Children need school and direct interaction with their peers and teachers. So please reopen at Phase Four or Five immediately, based on the actual science data and evidence. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is public participation. Yeah, I'm sorry, board communication. And I think I'll just, if it's okay, I'd like to just go alphabetically today. Can we start with Richard? Is that okay with you, Richard? No, no.
All right, all right. Hey, thank you, Tina. And I want to thank all of the speakers tonight. I understand their pain. I know what they're feeling, and I have grandchildren that would love to be back in school, but I also have my kids that are telling me, well, I think I would rather have my kids healthy and alive. So, you know, it goes back and forth all the time, and I do read all the emails. I understand what everybody's saying. And I do believe that Black Lives Matter very, very much. I just was seeing today on that incident that occurred up in, where was it? Where that black kid was shot seven times in the back.
Kenosha Hudson.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. So for me, Black Lives do matter, and until Black Lives matter, then I think all lives will matter, but we've got to make sure that we acknowledge the fact that Black Lives do matter. I want to also make a comment on something that has been bothering me ever since we had the SRO presentation. And again, I need to express that Mr. Rojas is a well-liked individual, and I do believe he's got the passion and compassion of the work that he's doing. What's really bugging me is that when we heard that presentation, and I heard it again at the DAC meeting, it seems like we weren't able to present an equal presentation for even a kid that had been arrested by an SRO and heard his story or her story. So that's been bugging me for a little bit here, and I'm hoping that the Equity Council and even DAC will make an attempt to see if we can't get a balance in terms of the presentation, because I know that SROs are doing a good job, but I also know that there's kids out there that have been affected by the fact that they've gotten tickets or they've been put in jail and all of that. So I just wanted to put that out there because it has been bugging me for a while since we had that presentation. And I want to congratulate Rob and the district in terms of being the best employer in the state of Colorado. Wow, that's quite an acknowledgement for our school district, and thank you, Rob, for your leadership on that, and thank all the teachers that participated in the survey. And I do think that Boulder Valley School District is one of the best places to work. So that covers me.
All right, Kathy.
I don't have much to add to what Richard said. It's heartbreaking that we are not able to be back for at least our elementary school kids, and I know that Rob is working and the 2.5-plus committee are working as hard as they can to be creative, to figure out how we solve that as quickly as possible. So I really appreciate people sharing their stories and sharing their concerns, and I feel pretty helpless sometimes because we have tied our future appropriately to what our health officials are telling us that we need to do, and I think we're following that, and we're following what science is telling us, and it is really heartbreaking. So thank you for sharing that. I'm hopeful that the numbers are going down and that soon we'll be able to serve at least some of our students. As far as the award, I just want to add another kudo to Mike Grados, who's been leading us for our HR for the last three years. I've never seen Mike be anything but calm, steady, professional, and friendly, and a smile on his face no matter what you throw on his plate. So I just want to say thanks to Mike and to the staff, because I think in part this award is due to his great leadership, leading our HR team. So thank you to Mike for doing that. And I think that's all I have to say. I have some questions, but I'm waiting for when Rob does the presentation on the reopening to ask some of my questions around that. So thank you.
And I agree with you 100% Kathy. I failed to mention Mike Grados, but he has been, I think, one of the bigger reasons why we have gotten this award. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Donna.
Yeah, I want to thank Mike as well, because I think that's why so many people want to work in our district, and there's not opportunities available, because we keep the people and the high-quality people that we have. And as far as the speakers go, I'm always glad when our speakers come forward and let us know exactly what they're feeling, because I think many of them speak for various facets within the community, and I think we have to consider all those facets. What I'm concerned of as far as the not opening is the inequities, the barriers that we're building. Academically, I think some students obviously are going to struggle, especially our little ones that are still learning to read. They're not reading to learn yet, and they need that individual attention. One mother came to me and said that it's different trying to instruct your own child at home. They'll throw a hissy fit a lot quicker with their parent than they will with being in person with the peer pressure of their friends as well as the teacher. I think that when those, we're creating gaps academically, which is going to lead to college readiness gaps, which is also going to lead to future job opportunity gaps. And I think we have to look at that and try to tear down those barriers. I think Rob and the team is trying to do that, but I think parents want answers. Time will tell. We're starting our first week. I spoke with a teacher today, almost two hours of speaking about how she's planned her lessons and how her day is going to run, and I think she had some great plans. I listened to a podcast on a news broadcaster turned teacher talking about how excellent you can make online learning. I think we have an opportunity here to try to help our kids, fourth grade on up. I think the kindergarten, first, second, and third graders are going to struggle, and I don't want parents to leave in droves, but I know that some parents are leaving and looking for any school that's open. I talked to a parent that just moved here from Ethiopia and was asking me, do I know of any private schools that had openings? I encouraged her to try the online, to stay with us. So I just appreciate the parents coming forward. I too am wanting and hoping for online or in-person learning. I have grandsons as well, Richard, and they're in school and have been since March, and there haven't been any outbreaks. They've really handled it well. I'm impressed with the way some schools are handling when parents can come in. I think there's solutions and things that we have to work towards solving. Thank you.
Okay, Kitty.
I don't have much to say today. I want to, you know, I agree with Kathy, I agree with Richard. Congratulations, Rob, congratulations, Mike, the whole district. That's such a great kudo for all of us, and doing a good job. I too am really sorry that we cannot get back to school right now in person. I wish we could, and I do believe that you all are doing the best you can and that the working group is going to come up with a solution to get at least some of the kids back. And I don't think there was anything else, so that's it for me. And I also would, as Richard said, believe that Black Lives do matter.
Okay, Lisa.
I wanted to address Carrie. I know you speak for lots of folks in our district. I just wanted to say that I hear you, that I'm also an essential worker with little kids, and it's a lot to figure out. I can't afford to send my kids to a full-day daycare program, and I'm trying to make an impossible puzzle fit together. So to you and to anyone else like you out there, I just want to say that your concerns are understood and that your voice is being represented, and that we're doing our best to make things work for folks like you and me. Rob and Mike, congratulations. I'm thankful and proud to work in a district that is such a fantastic employer, and also to work in a district that acknowledges that Black Lives Matter. And I think as a final thought, I'll say that not talking about racism is exactly what's got us in a position where police officers feel comfortable turning traffic stops into murders, so I don't think that's the right solution.
Okay, Stacy.
I don't have much either. I'll add my congratulations to the district for that great honor. It's very exciting. I just want to add that I am so happy that school is starting tomorrow. I feel like the anticipation of I feel like the anticipation of waiting for it to start was even worse than deciding how we were going to start. So, I'm really glad that we're going to start and we can move forward and figure out our next steps and hopefully get everyone back to the classroom sooner rather than later. Thanks.
Thanks. And Stacy, I echo your thoughts. This has been the longest road to the first day of school ever with a lot of discussion, a lot of discussion with neighbors and friends and teachers and staff. Um, and I uh, and I, I do want to appreciate or recognize our speakers and I feel that our superintendent and our district and our board is very aware of the challenges that not having in-person school creates for parents and particularly parents who have, are, are less financially able to hire tutors and go into private school. I think Rob is acutely aware of that and is working hard to start getting kids back to school. Um, and it's, it's just very difficult, I think, as we do this. Um, at the same time, I also want to recognize um how important it is that we are one of the greatest places to work in Colorado. That's how we get really great teachers. So, thank you, Mike and Rob and the rest of the HR staff for uh getting that w- award. Um, I'm just very appreciative of all the work that teachers have done to get ready for tomorrow. I think it's just been an incredible um, just a lot of learning, a lot of preparation. I feel like teachers are working twice as hard and putting everything they have to making this experience the best it can be. And I, I just keep hearing that from the teachers I'm speaking to. And um, I'm so thankful that they're investing so much into creating an opportunity that'll be the best for our students given the conditions that we have. So, I just wanted to really specifically thank our teachers for all their work and, and appreciate how difficult it's been.
Um, Tina, can I add one more thing, please? Sorry, I forgot. I just wanted to do a special shout out to those teachers who were featured in the Daily Camera and Channel 9 News last night who spent their summer putting together videos to help other teachers. I just think that shows the spirit of collaboration and what you were describing as the spirit of hard work to try and make this effort of having to work as a distance team work really well. So, I just want to say thank you to those teachers for spending their summer doing that amazing work. Um, and that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay. So then with that, we can go on to our next item, which is an information item and it's a back-to-school update. So, just dovetailing nicely. Rob?
Th- thanks Tina. As uh, hold on one second. As the team gets the deck pulled up. And Randy, if you can go to the second slide. So, we're here. We, we're really excited for day one. Uh, we are going to give the board and the community, and the community a pretty thorough update on all of these topics right here from technology, uh, the past week where teachers have spent, I believe, over 12,000 hours in training collectively, which is really impressive. Um, highlight the teacher-created lessons that Kathy um spoke to, uh, how we're working with Impact on Ed, um, impact for education on um our school supply, school supply distribution. A little more details on childcare, how that's working, how we're able to make that work, and then the supports we have for our families. And so, uh, again, very proud of our team uh to echo the, the comments from the board. Uh, just incredibly proud of our teachers. They're working just in, just doing incredible things to prepare for what's going to be a really fantastic online experience. Um, so with that, I will turn the presentation over to Andrew to talk about technology.
Excellent. Thanks, Rob, President Marquez, members of the board. Um, I'm happy to be here tonight to just give a brief update on a couple of the technology issue or items that we're working to ensure our students and teachers are prepared to go into this remote learning um situation. So, let me start with the student side. If you recall, in the spring, uh, we had a concerted effort to identify and help get all of our students internet. Um, we are continuing that effort. Um, we believe there will be more students identified as the school year starts. Uh, we have four partners that we're working with to ensure that we have good coverage for internet. Uh, LiveWire, which is the contract you had signed with the Connect Me program back in April, that has expanded. Um, we've, um, we're close to going live on Lafayette Elementary. They've started work on peak-to-peak, which by the way is right next to a, a development that we think will get a good uptake of um the free internet for those who are qualified out in that area. We also um are working on UniHill and we're just waiting for a piece of the bond uh construction to complete and then we'll get a LiveWire antenna out there as well. And then we have Verizon and T-Mobile Hotspots ready to go uh when we identify those students that cannot get LiveWire or Comcast Internet Essentials, um, which the district, uh, just uh reminding you, the district has an account with Comcast and we are paying for those um internet feeds for qualifying students. On the student sides, we, um, for Chromebooks, uh, we believe every student has a Chromebook that needs one. Um, I think if there's a piece of the story that is still concerning to me, it is the delays in getting new Chromebooks. They are held up in the manufacturing and uh supply chain out of China. Um, I've stopped giving um guidance on the date when we think we'll get them. Uh, but we're watching it closely and we're looking for alternatives um as we continue to move forward. Uh, but if you try to buy a Chromebook just about anywhere now, you'll find that everybody is sold out. On the teacher's side, um, we developed a system over the summer called RIVUS. Uh, RIVUS is the Remote Educational Video Audio System and it basically consists of a tripod, a high-definition camera that sits on top of that tripod that also has um highly sensitive microphones. Um, with that, the teacher can um both connect with students at home, but also with a big screen monitor that's part of the setup, they can see the students at home as well. Um, we believe this will uh give the teachers another option to produce higher quality um at-home instruction uh for our students. Um, all of these devices, over 1,500 have been delivered to the classrooms and we're in the final stages of ensuring that they're tested and ready to go. Um, so that was a big lift um with 1,500. A shout out to uh Rob Price and the bus drivers who helped us get those 1,500 out in the last uh week. And then at last, and we are um getting new Chromebooks for the teachers, but they are also delayed. Uh, this also is concerning in the sense that we have some Chromebooks that teachers have that are four or five years old. Those Chromebooks were never designed for the video um portion of uh, of education. And so, we're watching this closely. We're replacing them as we find them. Uh, but we really need that big shipment to come in. Um, and we'll just uh deploy them as soon as they're, they're available. All right, that's all I have tonight and I'll turn it over to Robin.
Good evening, everyone. So nice to see you again. So, once again, this year, our amazing partners at Impact on Education provided no-cost backpacks, school supplies, and this year masks, hand sanitizer, and earphones to students in grades PK 12 who need these items. In fact, Impact provided 50% more supplies this year than in years past, knowing that 2020 has brought greater need in our communities. Backpacks were distributed to families at several BVSD sites around the district last week. I want to make sure to give a huge shout out to Jenny Dunn from the East Network for all the logistical coordination, to the warehouse and transportation staff, especially our bus drivers for loading and unloading all of the, well, what was probably literally tons of supplies and transporting them to the sites. And finally, thanks to all the community liaisons and the network staff for working the backpack distribution. Now, we do have a really nice video to share with you that explains both the crayons to calculators program, but also shows some great footage from the distribution last week.
Randy?
Somebody want this one? Each year, we make sure that every student has those school supplies they need to start the school year off strong. And even though we're going to be learning remotely this year, we're making sure that every student has what they need. Realities of COVID have really stretched the financial abilities that many of our families have had. Some families have needed us to help them with school supplies for a long time. Other families just need us now more this year than they ever have before. We get our list from the district, our usual backpack with the crayons, the markers. We also have made some modifications. Headphones are now in, in every backpack because kids are learning from home and they need to get online. We also have masks that we're providing also for kids who need them. The average backpack costs about $75 for a family to get the backpack and all the school supplies that are expected. And it's even more critical this year because students are learning from home. So, they don't have the opportunity to borrow some crayons or colored pencils from their teacher. They don't have them.
This is a wonderful thing that the whole community has done for all of our students during this time of our pandemic. And I feel in my heart that if it wasn't for everyone here in this community to do this, our students wouldn't be able to get all the work that they need to get there.
It's such a scary time for families right now and knowing that we've fifth and we have resources, I hope gives some sense of strength and community to, to all our families out there.
Over and over, we hear such gratitude from families and in many ways, this is a small thing. But for many families, having school supplies provided for them makes all the difference.
Thank you very much. You guys is uh school supplies. You guys doing great.
It's wonderful that we can pick up all this stuff because otherwise we'd be going without. Um, I'm not working right now with the economic situation and my kids are at school and they don't have childcare. So, we really need this help.
Thank you guys for all the hard work and giving us all these supplies for our kids. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
A lot of these families, of course, they come here because they don't have the opportunity to buy uh and the privilege and the access to buy school supplies. And this is an opportunity for us to say, hey, we are here again. We care for you, for you and your family.
I sure miss you guys.
We want to say thank you. We're proud to be a part of BVSD and this is our fifth year getting free supplies for me and my kids and we're, we're proud and we just want to say thank you.
Isn't that a nice video? I can tell you that having been onsite at many of the distribution sites last week, that it really was so heartwarming to see our kids and our families getting the support that they need to help make them ready to start the school year. And just wanted to share that with you all. At this point, I am going to hand it off to Katie Mills, our Director of Professional Learning.
Thanks, Robin, and thank you for the opportunity to share with everyone an overview of what we've been up to in the last week during the Training Support Week, which was August 19th through 25th. Over the past week, we've had the opportunity to host over 35 uh training sessions for teachers ranging from technology implementation to continuing our work in this, on the strategic plan in the virtual setting. Um, one highlight of hosting professional learning virtually is that we're able to really broaden um the depth of training that we can provide for all BVSD employees, including paraeducators and substitutes. So, in this setting, they were able to join educators um in the training sessions. And as Dr. Anderson stated, over the past week, our teachers and educators and paras completed over 12,000 hours of professional learning. So, um, it's with huge gratitude that I thank the networks teams and everyone who had a part in this large-scale professional learning. Next slide, Randy? Thank you. In addition, we also had the honor of welcoming 76 brand-new educators to Boulder Valley. Uh, this year, our orientation looked a little different because we held it virtually, but I'm honored to say that we were able to really focus on our equity efforts as a district as well as providing um curriculum and um other district support um to our new employees. And now I'm going to hand it over to Mike Grados.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I would first, uh, first off, like to uh thank you for that, that, that nice compliment. Um, and it does not, it goes without saying that strong leadership with Dr. Anderson has been a real pleasure and I think that's a big part of it. But I also want to put out kudos to the, the Human Resources Team. Uh, they have done an outstanding job of reaching out to employees. Uh, we meet with all of our associations once a week. We problem solve, we troubleshoot, things of that sort, and that's just really paid off. So, thank you for that recognition, but that is quite an honor. And I didn't know about that till this morning when Dr. Anderson called me as well. So, what I'm going to talk to you now about is new licensed employees and you're seeing a graph and I'll get to that. But if you recall, last year, I came to you uh around the recruitment and retention of teachers of color. And uh, we were very, very serious at that time and still are about how we can do this. And now a pandemic has hit us. So, how do you deal with something like that? And I like, uh, I like Dr. Anderson's words when it comes to crisis like we have creates new opportunities. Well, we definitely took that up and uh we created some opportunities because if you recall, I presented a four-point plan to you. That four-point plan started with recruitment, uh, the hiring, the retention, and the pipeline that we would instill to uh get more teachers of colors within our, within our system. And I have to tell you, the pandemic interrupted that big time. We had a great, great action plans laid out uh where we were having some really good uh, uh fairs with uh teachers of color from different universities throughout the United States, around universities that we partnered with that had large numbers of teachers of color, over 75% and coming to, coming to Boulder to actually interview with principals. And of course, the pandemic came, we weren't able to do that. But given that, given that whole, that, that whole uh obstacle and, and barrier that we had to face, I'm still, um, I'm happy, but I'm not happy enough, put it that way, that we were able to make some gains. So, what you're seeing in this graph right here is about 40 people of color that we'd want to hire each year as we go through the year. And you can see it starts at 19, it goes all the way to 258. So, given that graph, um, I'm proud to say that we've done some things within the four-point plan that we were able to still do. Not as well as we wanted to, but we're able to still do. Uh, we put more teachers of color in hiring folders than we ever have. We were in the 96 to 97% range, down from an 89 to a 90% in years past. We were able to put more of our teachers of color in interviews. Um, more than we ever had, from a 42% all the way to a 65% range. So, that was very, very uh, that was very good for us. But the exciting new news is, and I know that Dr. Anderson and I went and we talked to several groups about uh our, our teachers of color and putting more teachers of color in our schools. We picked a number and we picked 40. So, um, we came up, we actually hit 39. And even all that pandemic, we were able to still hit 39. So, Randy, if you would put up that first graph, that first thing, that goal of increasing candidates of color in hiring folders, uh, an outcome of 8% from a 92 to a, to a, or a 90 to a 98% of continuing uh folders with candidates of color. Randy, hit the next one. And then increasing those candidates of colors that were interviewed, as I said before, a big drastic increase. And Randy hit the last one. And then our goal was 40 new educators of color. We came with 39 for this year. And as that, that graph, if we can continue with 40, we can get to that number and put up a big number in our, in our hiring of teachers of color. And it goes without saying that my recruitment manager, Lauren Lowe, takes a lot of credit for getting the action plans and pivoting, just pivoting so well when we had this pandemic and still outreach to a lot of the candidates and a lot of the universities and the partners that we've established with a, a lot of great people out in New Mexico, Texas, California, and Florida. So, it's been, it's been a great, uh, great ride, but we're still not satisfied. We still need to get more and we're going to continue to work, work on that. You noticed, we only had 72 hires this year. But we're still going to move this forward. And I think the strong leadership that we have within our strategic plan is going to allow us to do that. Uh, we talked to principals, we look at their ratios, we see how many white teachers as opposed to teachers of color and compare that to the ratios of the kids of color they have in their building. They're, they're becoming aware of that. It's becoming a great awareness of what we need to do and our principals are really supportive of that. So, I'm very proud of that. But uh, proud of the HR team for uh having that pivot. When I said, hey, guys, we need to do something different, they, they responded. So, so my next, I'll leave it at that, but I think uh the next one is Samantha. Are you next?
I am. Thank you, Mike. Um, so, we, uh, we've been really busy this summer. Uh, thank you Kathy for recognizing that our- Thank you, Kathy, for recognizing that our teachers have also been really busy over the summer and using the summer as an opportunity to build resources that can be used district-wide to support instruction while we're in home learning, but could also be used to support instruction if we're in hybrid learning or even mostly in-person learning as supplements. So our team was able to create 41 instructional units that were fully built out in SchoolAG, our learning management system. And those units are a result of some acceleration of our strategic plan. So the units themselves are actually fully aligned to the prioritized standards and fully aligned to the BVSD instructional model that's been built, and also fully aligned to our culturally responsive practices framework. In addition, we were able to complete a portfolio of video lessons to cover the entire first four weeks of language arts and math instruction for grades PK through five, using some of our core resources, Foundations, Fonus and Penel Classroom, Math Expressions, and ReadyGen. These were recorded by master teachers and edited by Lynn Gershman, one of our teacher librarians. And I have to give credit to the vision and execution of this to one of our principals, Nick Vanderpoel, for seeing this through. And at this point, I am going to hand it off now to Renee.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so this is an update on childcare. Every one of our childcare sites that we had planned to open, I am very happy to say will open tomorrow, 7:30 a.m. You could see that there's quite a few sites in Boulder. We have our SAC sites, and we have Color Me Smart preschool sites. We also have our Arapahoe Ridge Early Connections Infant and Toddler site, which right now has 12 infants and toddlers in there. And then we have several YMCA sites. So we worked through an addendum to our MOU with the YMCA, and they are open for registration. All of the YMCA and SAC CMS and Early Connections sites follow the same protocols, and they're in our handbook. Erie has two sites, the preschool at Meadowlark and then the Meadowlark School itself, K8. Louisville has three sites open. Polk Creek is our biggest site, and I've walked almost every one of these sites. And they're looking great. Principals, teachers are being very collaborative. The custodians are amazing and have moved a ton of furniture with our SAC staff to get everything ready, to clear out all the stuffies, which is unfortunate in an elementary school, but needed, and to make sure that kids have ergonomic seating and flexible seating and all the things that they need. Room Field at Emerald is open, and we reopened that site. We had closed it, but we were able to utilize the heart and then also the cafeteria and the gym and several sites within the school. So we're able to open up enrollment again at Emerald. And our families need to enroll, there is space. Superior, El Dorado PK and the Y at Superior Elementary are open. Lafayette Sanchez, Lafayette Elementary is close to capacity. Stephanie Jackman has done a phenomenal job, very collaborative with her staff. Sanchez is a small site, and we did a lot of outreach there. And we're hearing that a lot of families have multi-generational households and are not yet comfortable with sending their kids into a childcare setting. Netherlands, we are in process of staffing that site. However, we do have families, and right now we're transporting the children from Netherlands Elementary School to Flatirons and back at a specific time. And we worked through, we talked to every family personally to find a time that worked for them. Next line. So we hired staffing, I think a few board meetings ago, I spoke to you about staffing. And we have quite a few new staff. We did eight new hires directly to the community schools childcare programs. We have 67 temporary reassignments. And again, kudos to Mike Grados and the HR directors, Melissa Ribery, Russ Bennett, and Steve Landrigan for literally, and Lauren Lowe for working throughout the weekend with me to reassign these employees, give personal phone calls to them so they knew what was going on. So as of today, we have 75 employees who are new to SAC, and they've all received the nine to 15 hours of required training. Then we have another, I'd say, 75 SAC employees, and they already have the training, the required training. The training's on child development, safety, medication administration, and delegation. All of our employees are delegated. So for EpiPens and all the kinds of medication that kids come to school with, we're able to delegate and provide those medications to children. And then we have a handbook, and there's a link there. And we continue to update that with new guidance as it comes out and is approved. Every site has a supervisor and assistant supervisors. Most sites have several, just given the numbers. And their job is to oversee the operations and support students. We have staff-level employees. They cannot be left alone with students, so we staff it in a way to make sure that there's always a supervisor or assistant supervisor present. And we have door monitors, and they're almost all, I think they are all Unit C employees. So again, a collaborative effort. A lot of bus drivers stepping up to do the active screening at the doors, greet families. And then we have the health room paraprofessionals who are there to support wellness needs and the bumps and scrapes and things that come along with kids in school. And that's all for me.
I believe Bill Sutter is going to be taking this slide. Bill, are you able to do that?
Yes. So we had our enrollment center open for supporting families. We did extend the time that it was happening as we pushed the start of school back by a week. So we were able to extend a few days. Big push to get online video tutorials for folks on how to sign up for things. And then there were in-person appointments that were available for folks as needed to be able to come in and sit down with somebody and get the support that they needed. So it's really a collaborative effort, IT, the school support staff, enrollment office, early childhood, transportation. So once again, pulled that off in extraordinary circumstances this year.
And I think Katie Mills is back for the section.
Yes, I'm excited to announce the addition of the Family Learning Hub to the BVSD parent website. We've noticed that with the addition of online learning that our parents are needing support with how to log their children into different platforms. And so we've been working on creating a series of videos in both English and Spanish and other resources to support families with online learning. Now that the Teacher Support Week is over, our team will really begin focusing on how we can create additional resources for families as they encounter their new role supporting their children at home.
Good evening. This is just a quick shout out to Food Services. Not only have they served over 580,000 meals since March, but we've also opened up a central kitchen behind the scenes, which was a significant lift from their side. So if you see someone in Food Services, please thank them. The meal distribution program started again yesterday. We have two time slots available for pickup. Those are on Mondays from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The distribution locations, which are seven sites across the district, can be found on our website. Food Services is also providing food this beginning of the school year for childcare, our Head Start programs, and limited catering throughout the district. At this time, we'll turn it back over to Sam.
Thank you, Rob. So we're going to talk a little bit about where we're headed next to ensure that our schools have the support that they need to be providing a safe and productive learning environment for our kids. Next slide, please, Randy. One of the things we're really hard at work at is trying to plan what a Phase 2+ could look like so that we can get students access to in-person learning as soon as possible. So right now, we're really working on designing solutions for the problem. How might we provide the benefits typically associated with in-person learning in a way that creates a more equitable, relevant, and human-centered educational system for students while keeping our students, families, staff, and greater community safe? That's a tall order. I will say that the team has been all in. So we have this amazing group of 15 teachers, five building principals, 10 district staff, and four parents who have dedicated a huge amount of time to this and who are working really hard to envision some creative solutions to have our kids be able to return to in-person learning. Today, they presented 25 different ideas to a feedback panel of more than 50 stakeholders, including parents, students, some of our paraeducators, and other staff that represent a variety of departments. Next slide, please, Randy. For our next steps, the group is going to be meeting in small groups over the next week to take the feedback that they got today and to refine, revise their ideas and present those to us next week. Then we'll be doing a really quick turnaround to turn that into a draft written plan, which we're going to ask the team to review over the following week and give us feedback, which will then tighten up and create into a final presentation that we'll make to the internal committee to get to agreement with them before presenting it to all of you on September 22nd. And I want to express my gratitude to our friends in the Boulder Valley Education Association. Terry Mulford, my co-facilitator on this, have been great partners. And this has been, I think, a great example of how district staff and BVA can collaborate together towards some creative solutions. And I'm going to hand it off now.
To me?
Renee.
So knowing, obviously, we've been communicating a lot in regards to where we stand today, you know, being a one-plus scenario. As we have people now returning to the building, we want to make sure that they're aware of the public health precautions that we're asking people to take. And so what you will notice as you walk into our buildings now and in the future, incoming weeks, as each school gets their allotment of signage, is those sort of reminders as you walk through the door, all the things that we've been talking about in email up to this point, but now in a physical space, reminding people that they need to stay home if they're feeling sick, you know, keeping distance, social distance, wearing masks, washing their hands, et cetera. And one of the things that we really want to make sure that we're doing is that as somebody is walking up to the building, we're hoping, as Sam's committee ends its work, that we are able to reintroduce students into that beyond just the childcare, that as situations change, as we have situations in which students have to move to and from in-person learning because of quarantine or whatever else might be expected, that they'll be able to get quick cues as to what phase we're in and what's expected in those phases as we make those moves. And a big part of that process has been helped by feedback directly from our principals. We've had a small signage advisory committee that's given us some great feedback in regards to what will work. We actually were out at Platt Middle School today, placing some of these things and getting some direct feedback from the staff there in regards to what will work to catch middle school's attention and what won't, once they come back to in-person learning. And then just a shout out to the security team that's helping us to actually get these placed in buildings in the coming weeks. And so with that, I will turn it over back to Rob Price.
Thank you, Randy. One of the major, or the big pieces of the puzzle in keeping students and staff safe when they return to the buildings is ventilation, the three big things, making sure we're masking, physical distancing, and then bringing in fresh air in our buildings. We've got a major partner in our backyard in the University of Colorado that we've been partnering with. But what we've been doing is changing out filters across the district. We've been sold over 7,000 new filters with the highest filtration rate appropriate for each different ventilation system. We continue to do preventative maintenance checks to ensure all of our mechanical units are operating properly. Everything is designed to ASHRAE, which is the American Society of Heating and Refrigeration Air Conditioning Engineers. That's what you read CDC or University of Harvard's reports, that's what they're referencing. But really, all we're trying to do is bring in ample fresh air to provide to the occupants to dilute the air once we have people back in their buildings. And then we're also deploying portable air cleaners with HEPA filters, and those are being installed in our health rooms and our isolation rooms at each school. I think we've ordered over 120 of those, and we'll be deploying those over the next few weeks. Next slide. So as you know, using the outdoors will increase our opportunity for in-person learning. So we're putting a lot of our resources to look at this and to provide professional development, but also just giving our teachers and our instructors the next steps for planning as we're thinking about those. So we've got a team that's identifying spaces. We've got plenty of spaces around our buildings. We've got the green spaces, we've got parks. We've also built in outdoor learning classrooms. So there's a link to this, we're not going to click on it now, but those are the resources that we've provided our teachers for outdoor learning planning. Next slide. Extremely proud of what our Safe Routes to School team has done. And if you haven't met them, Lamon Hilliard, Peter, and Amy Thompson have done a significant amount of work planning as we started thinking about the ability or restrictions around transportation and how we make our schools safer. We started looking into what can be done. So with remote learning happening, our Safe Routes to School team has come up with strategies to keep kids moving while they're at home. So we're reimagining TripTractor, which will launch September 1st. And the idea behind this is those students can earn TripTractor dollars at participating schools for up to two 30-minute periods of exercise per day. And then when they return to in-person learning, they'll be rewarded with active trips to school. Our bus drivers, this is a photo, not actually of what they just completed today, but we're building out these temporary pop-up traffic gardens, which are bicycle safety courses made with spray chalk. These traffic gardens have become popular around the country, but these are safe, no-touch place spaces for families to practice the rules of the road. So the first one completed is at Heatherwood. We have four drivers, bus drivers go out there and complete this, and they'll be moving strategically throughout the district to create more of these. Our team is also assembling a library of pedestrian and bicycle safety videos to get out to teachers and principals so they can get that out to the community. And then as we anticipate returning to in-person learning, we're creating travel maps for schools to highlight active means to get to school safely. So we're going to show, we'll talk a little bit more about the three-block challenge that I've talked previously, and then show them the safe ways to get to school and stay away from some of the conjecture. So don't want it to go unknown. We've had an extremely successful summer this, just in construction. We completed 15 projects, over $46 million worth of work. 12 of these projects are substantially complete. The other three are ongoing. Just the overall feel, the look, the systems all perform better. So again, all I want to say here is thank you to the voters for supporting us. We're in our second-to-last year here. Next year, we'll be really focused on the remaining buildings that are receiving air conditioning. But we've really improved our learning environments throughout this bond. So some of the highlights of this summer's work in completing the new culinary center, as I mentioned, I just, this was a huge task for Ann Cooper, Stephen Menhart, and our entire Food Services team. They've done a tremendous job, just the planning and then the implementation of getting this open. Right now, we are producing food in the culinary center. We've also installed air conditioning in six schools. And then we've started construction for two new additions at UniHill and then the new construction at the Halcyon School. So more information about the accomplishments of the bond program can be found on our website. We will be providing another update in September. And at this time, I will turn it over to Sam Messier.
Thank you, Rob. We also have two of our school buildings that are under new leadership. We're proud to announce that Barb Oswege will be the new principal at El Dorado PK8. Barb was formerly serving as the assistant principal at that school. At Casey Middle School, we're really excited to welcome Gabriela Renteria, who was formerly the assistant principal at Angivine Middle School within our district. And at Netherlands Elementary, very excited to welcome Caleb Malamed, who was most recently an assistant principal at an elementary school in DPS, and excited to welcome him to Netherlands. principal at an elementary school in DPS, and excited to welcome him to Netherlands. And that, I believe, concludes our presentation for this evening.
Okay. So, board members, do you mind if I go in alphabetical order again?
Hi. All I can say is, wow. A lot of work was done. And I just have to give kudos to all of the staff that was involved in making all of this happen. And I'm so proud. Just one quick question, and the work at Uni-Hill, when is that going to get completed?
Richard, that work will finish up the summer of '21. So, it'll be ongoing throughout the year, and we plan for that. And then, major lifts. We've got the addition we're going to focus on during the school year, and then the rest of the renovation will take place next summer.
So, if we decide at some point to do in-person learning, will Uni-Hill have the capacity to be able to do that?
Still has the capacity. Building's opened up right now for teachers, so it's substantially complete. We're just working on the south side of the intermediate building.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, Kathy.
So, I echo what Richard said. This is an amazing amount of work, and thank you to everybody for rolling up your sleeves and doing such amazing work. I have one general question and then some specific questions. So, Rob, I was hoping that you could kind of walk us through what tomorrow's going to look like at each level. I know we still have a lot of things to work out. And then, what I'm mostly interested in is what kinds of supports are we going to be giving to families to navigate that first day of figuring out all the different platforms and logins and all of that kind of thing? So, could you, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I'm just having a hard time visualizing it at the ground level.
Sure thing, Kathy. We have, hold on one second. Can you hear me okay?
A lot of echo, but okay.
So, our area superintendents are going to take this on.
I'm going to stop talking here. This is ridiculous. Who knew that in my guest bedroom I had better technical capabilities? So, I'll ask that, I think Robin's going to talk about elementary, Sam's going to talk about middle, and Margaret's going to talk about high school. Just give everybody just a quick update on what's it going to be like on the first day of school, if that works for everybody.
Sure. I'm happy to talk about that. So, you are right. It is difficult to visualize what that will look like. And hopefully, parents have a better idea now after teachers have reached out to them to make an initial introduction, introduce themselves so that students understand who their teachers are, and to give them an idea of what to expect the first day. So, the elementary school schedule will really reflect the same content and basically the same pacing that it would in an in-person environment. So, the elementary schedule will provide a minimum of three live engagement opportunities per day, Tuesday through Friday, and that can be inclusive of or in addition to specials. Schools may change around the order of content if they teach literacy first, followed by math, for example, to accommodate a specific school schedule or grade-level schedules, but all content will be delivered in the same pacing and in the same scheduling that it would in person. So, for example, literacy may be either in morning or afternoon, but it will still be 60 to 90 minutes at every school the same way that it would be normally. So, if I just talk you quickly through what a sample schedule might be, there might be an initial morning meeting where teachers would meet with a whole group of students and set them up for the day, let them know what is happening. Do perhaps an executive functioning or a social-emotional learning lesson help them have the supplies and get organized for what is coming. They may have then a 60-minute literacy block, followed by a 45-minute specials, art, PE, or music, followed by a movement break or an outdoor break, perhaps another 30 minutes of literacy, lunch, afternoon could be 30 minutes of independent work time, math for an hour, an hour of science, social studies, health, and then a closure to the day. So, mini lessons, kids, full group, small group, individual check-ins with teachers, but touching on the same content that they would normally. That's, in a nutshell, how elementary will work.
Okay. And middle level. So, what a typical day will look like for middle level is that, of course, our middle level start time is a little bit later, typically around 8:30. So, our middle level students will start their typical days with math and literacy self-paced online activities, using either Reading Plus or some math programs that we've recently acquired that will help them go through some self-paced math activities that are adaptive and that adapt to the student's level of challenge. After that, they'll have three class periods a day. So, a student would, during the first quarter, have their period one, their period two, and their period three class every day, Tuesday through Friday. The way that would look is the first period would have about 50 minutes that would be synchronous learning with the teacher facilitating lessons with the students. That doesn't necessarily mean that the teacher is going to be talking or that there's going to be screen time for that entire 50 minutes, but the teacher would definitely be opening the instruction session synchronously live and then closing it live and probably checking in at various points in the middle. In addition, there'd be another 50 minutes for that first period class that would be for asynchronous work that's related to that same content. Then, the student would move on to their second period class and then close out the day with their third period class. When they get to second quarter, they'll rotate and they'll go to their period four, five, and six classes.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity and want to share a little bit about what high school will be doing tomorrow. So, I would say overall, very similar to what you've heard for elementary and middle on a daily basis. We want to make sure that our students are connected to their teachers and that they also are having a level of independent work and group work on a daily basis. I think that what tomorrow will bring uniquely for K-12 is a welcome back. Many of our schools have developed videos and connections. As a matter of fact, I watched one just today, developed by students at the high, one of the high schools, just sharing that we can do this. You know, we've missed each other and we're connected, and we will find ways to persevere. And I am confident that our teachers will be doing that tomorrow. I think specifically at all of our schools, but specifically at the high schools, many of our high schools today have practiced. We got a couple of emails from parents who have already connected with their kids' teachers K-12, and I think that tomorrow will look like a launch. So, and I will say that we're going to ask for a lot of patience because we know watching other districts around us have struggled a little with signing on and getting connected and an entire, you know, internet service provider going down. So, I think that that may happen tomorrow, and we would ask for just a little bit of patience. And then, finally, I would say that across the board, our schools have worked really hard to build systems of consistency so that, similar to what you heard from both Robin and Sam, students will open with a welcome from their teacher on a regular basis, possibly a school-wide meeting, then have some introduction to lesson, social community building tomorrow specifically, and then content moving forward, and then having an opportunity for a closing with their classmates. And we will continue to refine what we're doing so that we're meeting the needs of our families. Thank you.
So, can I ask a follow-up question, Rob? So, Robin, it sounded like the elementary teachers have already reached out to their students ahead of time. So, tomorrow, they've helped them understand how to log on and how to find the platforms, or are they going to learn that tomorrow? I'm just, more importantly, I'm just trying to figure out what supports there are for those families who may not be tech-savvy and who have a lot to figure out on top of the learning part.
Yes, that's a great question. So, teachers have reached out to families and have provided them with just some getting-started info. Also, we are excited about the Family Learning Support Hub that is, that has its landing spot on the website, on bbsd.org for families. We also have had some families reach out to our family helpline to get specific support in Spanish to help them prepare for tomorrow. So, it is all hands on deck tomorrow, well, and every day following that, because we have our network staff ready. We have our equity and partnership staff ready, our helpline staff ready, principals, counselors, community liaisons all ready in case families do struggle with being able to connect or knowing how to navigate the schedule with the technology.
Kathy, did you have other questions?
Yeah, it's just, Robin froze, so I was just kind of waiting to see if my computer would catch up.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize I had frozen. I can repeat any part of that.
No, no, no. It's fine. It's hard because you don't know when you freeze. You just know when other people freeze. Can I ask the same question about, I assume we've reached out to all our sped families and we've had those conversations so they know what the first day's going to look like and had those initial IEP conferences, or are those still ongoing, Rob? Or Rob, whoever.
Sure, I can answer that question. That, yes, I know that special education personnel are still in the process of reaching out to every family to really understand what they need. So, there are a series of questions that are being used to guide the conversation. How did it go last spring? Based on how it went last spring, what do you anticipate as being some extra support or the types of supports that your child might need now? And then, what is it, when we look at the individual goals that your child has on their IEP and the, what the general ed environment will be like in Phase 1, what is it that your child is going to need to be able to access learning? And what is it that we may have to look at doing differently in order to be able to provide the most access for all students? So, in short, the answer to that question is yes. They are, they are reaching out to each family, but also so is the central office, special education personnel. They have been on deck to really have in-depth conversations with families as needed too, because it is our goal to make sure that we are, to the very best of our ability, meeting the needs of every single student, and it is taking us in this realm, but as it is in every realm, thinking differently about what we do and about individual students' needs and individual students' and families' responses to the current situation.
So, I have a couple of quick questions for Mike Grata. So, how did we come up with the 40? I know you said you just picked it, but I'm wondering how we came up with the number 40 for hires of teachers of color.
Yeah. So, as we, we thought, as we looked at our numbers from the past, do you recall the last time also, I think it was prior to the last meeting on the four-point plan, we were, I think, out at Superior, and we had that board meeting out there, and I gave you some interesting data around where we were in terms of the numbers each year. We were only, in that last five years, were gaining 2% gains. So, that number, Dr. Anderson and I talked about a number, and we said, why couldn't we just do 40? 40, we could do 40. 40's doable.
Well, I think, I think the idea, Mike, was if we did 40 for five years in a row, then that would be the number that we would need to double the number of students or of teachers of color in the district. That's how we came up with the 40.
That's the other one. Yeah, and I think the graph represented that. If we increased by 40 each year, we'd be up to 258. That would increase the double size.
So, I'm not an expert in this field at all, but what I hear when we hire teachers of color, that often they feel isolated in the environments, and I'm wondering what we're doing to help retain those teachers and help them become part of the community so they don't feel isolated.
Yes. That was one of our, part of our four-point plan, the affinity groups that we would establish. We have established two, and they will start here relatively soon. But we're doing that with new teachers in terms of new NEO, but we're also taking teachers of color that we've had in the last couple of years, this year and last year, and doing some affinity groups with them. That is, that is not difficult to do, but it can definitely be hard to do virtual. I mean, usually, what a support really comes hand-in-hand with face-to-face and people-to-people. That will be a little hard for us, but we're looking through that and trying to figure that out. One of our teachers, Amy Nelson, is being really instrumental in helping us start that with the African-American group and also the Latino group. So, we're definitely making some gains on that, but we hope that we can get better at that as well. The other thing is just retention, around retention, is looking, going after your own people, the pipeline. We did, we were able to meet with many of our classified staff who wanted to be teachers as well, and they got into programs. So, we have a few that we're monitoring. They are in programs right now through Metro State. So, hopefully, you know, as part of that, they will be around because they can be a teacher.
That's awesome. Thanks. And then, just a few more quick questions, I promise. So, for Renee, I was surprised by the numbers at Sanchez, and I appreciated your response. I am assuming we have continuing enrollment opportunities for those families as they maybe become more comfortable, and can they do drop-ins so that they kind of learn that it's okay? I'm just curious how we help support those families, because I would think that there might be a need in that community.
Yeah. And like I said, we've done a bunch of outreach there. So, we are not closing any sites unless they become full, and Sanchez clearly is not full. So, parents can absolutely register. And then, what else related to that? What else? Did you want to?
That's all. I was just wanting to. Kind of, and they can do drop-ins if they want, so they kind of learn how the, or do we not do drop-ins?
No. Oh, that was the other part of it. No, we're not going to do drop-ins as a safety precaution and to make sure that we have the right staffing ratios. However, tomorrow, we're going to have the daily camera over at the Mesa site, and they can actively screen, because we do those active screening checks. And I think what will be helpful is to have some images, and I was talking to Randy too, about getting some images of what the childcare sites look like. And having walked them myself, it felt really good to see what the staff and what the principals and how we've all kind of come together around this. And I think that the more we can get out there in front of the community and show them what the sites look like, I think they'll feel better about this as an option, especially if they really do need it.
And then, one last question. This one I have for Andrew. We all heard the horror stories at Jeffco yesterday, and I'm wondering what kinds of security we have on our system to try to protect our students when they log in. I know we're not using Zoom, but I'm just curious about what kind of protections we have.
Yeah. I think we have worked hard over the last four or five years to put fundamental security into our systems. Everything from phishing checks that are on our emails. So, when an email comes in, Google itself is checking those to making sure our passwords are secure. At this point, we continue to send out information to our teachers to be watching for scams because they are still happening, but I feel pretty good on where we're at with just general, a student generally falling for one of the scams. And certainly at the elementary school, they do not have email, and so, at that level, they're the safest.
That's all I have, Tina. Thanks.
Okay, Donna. You're on mute.
I appreciate everybody's hard work as well, and Kathy hit on some of the questions I had written down. One, I did meet with a teacher today that was explaining how tomorrow would look to her in future days, so I had a little more understanding of what some kiddos are going to expect. My question is basically, how is the district going to monitor engagement and participation? That's it.
So, I can jump in pretty quickly, and then Robin as well, I'm sure, can jump in. So, two ways that we're looking at, a number of ways that we're looking at participation. First would be attendance, students attending both synchronously and asynchronously through a variety of ways of inputting their information and participating in activities. We also, and you may recall that over the spring, we tried to align our engagement teams that already exist in the district to be re-engagement teams, so that if students weren't engaged or we were finding that parents weren't connecting or students weren't connecting, those groups reached out to them to see, was it an internet issue? Was it connectivity issue? Were there other factors? And how we could provide those supports. issue? Were there other factors? And how we could provide those supports. This year, and I'll throw it over to Robin, as we're starting, launching this year, we're, we are aligning that assistance as well with our student services support team and our, you're on, Robin.
Okay, I think it looks like she froze, so I'm happy to just, to just take it from here. So yes, I would agree with everything Margaret said, and I would add a couple of things. That, you know, as teachers engage with students throughout the day, you know, they have moments where they are engaging with larger groups, engaging with smaller groups at different levels. They will be monitoring work completion. But we are working hard on creating a process of learning coaches. We have really studied very thoroughly our data from last spring about engagement. And so we feel like we have a very good understanding of who engaged, why students who engaged consistently did, and who didn't engage, and really understand why it is they didn't engage. And so what we know is that we have to be able to maximize the, during the day, opportunities that kids have. We have to maximize their access to content. We have to maximize their ability to organize themselves. We have to be able to maximize the interactions that they have with teachers and with each other when they're in small groups. And so as Margaret said, we have tightened or beefed up or responded in terms of what our student support team will be doing with engagement at the broader level. We are also looking at how it is that, starting, you know, in just a couple of days, we can use our other personnel to help meet with students individually or in small groups, to help them not only make sure that they're physically or technologically able to engage, but also mentally, social, emotionally, but also in terms of executive functioning. You know, executive functioning, meaning their ability to organize and pace themselves and figure out how to pay attention and how to take notes and how to understand what's going on and how to ask questions if they don't understand. And then how to seek help or interact with their teachers if they do need extra support. So we are looking at engagement in a variety of ways. Social-emotional engagement, engagement through technology, but also engagement with grade-level content. And hopefully, that, that answers what you're asking.
Okay. Donna, you all set? Okay. All right, Kitty?
All right. I have a couple of questions. Talk to me, please, more about the high school schedules and how the performing arts are going to work, because I have some of the same questions that we've heard from a number of high school parents, is how the block, the schools that have chosen to do only, you know, half the classes in one chunk and then the other half in the other chunk. And how is that going to work?
Margaret, you're muted.
Thank you. It actually depends on the high school specifically, of the comprehensive high schools. Each one have developed a plan that will fit the needs of their community and their students, based on what those specials would look, or those elective classes would look like at a high school level. And I do know that there have been a variety of approaches based on meeting the needs of the students. They will have the classes available to them as we've always had in elective schedules, but I would definitely reach out to individual school principals to provide that, that specificity, based on the numbers and the schedule and the systems that work for them. They are providing them, but are very specific to building use.
And then, and then, so how do the, you know, the core classes, I mean, I know how they work, but how is it not a problem, I guess, to say, take your foreign language for a semester, and then you don't see it again till second semester? Or, yeah, any of the classes where the continuity might get lost?
So what I can share is that at each of the high schools, they have been able to provide a, a plan for how that continuity will be met, based on their individual schedule. So if they have a semester plan, what does that look like for engagement and connection and continuity through extension and intervention during the weeks that they're not connected for the coursework? And then the same would happen if they were in a quarter model, and those plans have been submitted to all of us, or should be by the, tonight, actually, the final plans around what that will look like for each school, so that we can actually answer the question more specifically, based on each high school.
Okay. So if a parent had a question, they should contact their principal?
Absolutely. I would definitely contact their principal.
Okay. My next question is for Mike Grados. Good job on what you were able to do, considering we had a pandemic thrown at us. But you talked about having teachers in hiring folders. What's, what does that mean?
Yeah, great question. It's in AppleTrack, which is our online application program, there's a folder that the applicant goes into. And what that, if they meet the minimum requirements, they go into another folder, which is called a hiring folder. And then that is given to the principal, then the principal uses that folder to, to determine who they're going to interview.
So does that just happen automatically in the software?
Yes. So if I, if you, Kitty, if you apply, you, you fill out everything, it goes into a folder. And then what, what happens next, the automatically will screen to what, to see if you meet the minimum requirements, then you move to the next phase. Because we get applicants who don't meet the requirement. They may have a teaching degree, but maybe they don't have a math degree, and we're looking for a math person. But they'll apply, so it moves them out of that folder. So they have to meet the minimum requirements, license, things of that sort.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other question I had came up, well, when we were talking, talking about bicycling in the presentation, is that, you know, I know we had the one mother who was very concerned about lack of busing, and they live four miles away. Do you know if Impact has, or Impact on Education has any program to get bikes for kids who, you know, won't be, assuming they'll go back in person sometime, but couldn't ride the bus if they could get a bicycle?
I do not know that, that Impact on Education has a, a program specifically for that, but we do, not only do the, do folks at each individual school, but Impact on, on Ed has given us funding to meet the individual needs of kids. So I wouldn't say that's outside of the realm of possibility, but I don't think we have a bike-specific program.
So if a parent needed to get a bike for their child so the kid could go to school, who should they contact for help?
They can contact anybody at their school who knows how to get ahold of our family engagement specialist, Ari's team, and, and he can connect them to make sure that they get the help they need.
Okay. And was there something else? No, there's, no, it wasn't about opening up. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
Tremendous work all around, so, so thank you so much to everybody. I don't have any questions. I do, I do want to say that we're nervous for tomorrow and excited for tomorrow, kids and me both. And that so far, in my experience, speaking for, for myself and for our elementary school, it's been, it's been great. We've had a lot of communication from our principal, from our teachers, from our in-house tech support, making sure that everybody's logged on. We've had opportunities to practice, making sure we're all ready for tomorrow morning. Picked up a bunch of school supplies that were specific to things that my kids would need, and some of them were workbooks, but a lot of them were things that the teachers had stapled together and written out and made for the school year so that the kids would be well-supported. So I think while we're nervous about how to do this while we're working, we're, we're feeling really great about the level of support we have so far, and if that's the level of support we're seeing across the board, and I imagine and hope it is, I think we're off to, to a good start.
Okay, Stacy?
I don't have any questions either. Just a big thank you for all your hard work, and I want to share my personal experience too. I have a high school at Boulder High, and he contacted all of his teachers, and they were very responsive with him, got back to him right away with the questions he had. And so far, just very, a very positive.
Okay. Yeah, and also, this looks great. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate all the thought and intention in the plan, and, and hope things go really well. I have a couple of questions. The first is, when we're thinking about Phase 2.5, how will the process go in terms of timing to reach consensus with the BVEA? And I, and I was delighted to hear that we're working with, that the BVA is a, you know, a strong voice in this process, so that we're all communicating and on the same page as we march forward. But do we anticipate having to add to the timeline to help us accommodate for the consensus model?
Well, I think that, I mean, I would say that BVA is a full partner with us in this process. Terry and I are co-facilitating this, and I, we, we've been working side-by-side to plan all of these meetings, to plan out the process, to facilitate the process. And I, I feel like we're really in a true collaboration as we try to work through this and solve the problem. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to deliver on time. It is a pretty compressed and ambitious timeline to come up with a, with a complete plan, but at this point, I am cautiously optimistic.
Okay, that's awesome. And the other question I had is, a lot of people say, or email me, or, or say, do you think I should let the superintendent know what's happening in Adams 12? Or does anyone have a clue what's going on in Cherry Creek? I, I was just wondering if you could take a moment, Rob, to talk about how you consistently learn about what's happening and stay up to date with our fellow or our neighboring districts?
Absolutely. We have a weekly call where I have an opportunity to connect with all of the, the superintendents in the Denver metro. We also had a working group where many of our senior-level staff were working together as we started to try to kind of untangle the complexities of what it is that we're trying to deal with. And I think that, that there are different versions of what's happening in communities across, across the front range, that, and I think that every school district has, has some nuance to it, whether it's the health data, whether it's logistical challenges or issues, or whether it's just philosophically where it is they want to go. So we're, we're all aware of the Adams 12 Plan, while we're at the Cherry Creek Plan, and are really excited about the work that's happening here locally to, to be able to bring forward the plan that is going to help us overcome some of the logistical challenges that we faced, to make sure that we're able to get kids back in front of their teachers. And so as long as the, as folks continue to wear masks and social distance and stay away from parties on the hill, I think we'll be in really good shape.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all I have. So I'd like to move to the next information item, which is the Dreamba-, Dreambox contract. Is everyone okay to move forward? Yeah? Okay? Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. I, I think we're going to have Kathleen Sullivan just give us a brief update on why this is on as an information item. Kathleen, are you?
Yeah, I'm here. My video's not working well, so we'll just go with audio. This is on as an information item, but in the future would be on as consent. This is a contract that was signed by Dr. Anderson pursuant to the board's authority for those purchases that needed to be made immediately. This is an item that we had to train our teachers on, so they can assess and work with our students this school year. So it was signed, and now it's just presented for the board's information consistent with that resolution.
Okay, so we don't need to put it on consent, correct?
No, you really don't need to do anything with it, because you already conveyed the authority to Dr. Anderson, and he exercised it. So in the future, these will just be there for you to know about.
Okay. Does anyone have a question about the contract? Okay, great. And then I guess we can move on to our next item, which is the enrollment update with Bill Sutter.
Yes, thanks, Tina. Just to introduce this topic, I think that student enrollment has been something that all of us have been keeping a close eye on. I wanted to give the board and the public an update on where we are in regards to enrollment, given the situation with our pandemic and starting with home learning. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Bill, who's got a, a few slides just to walk you through.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Let me bring up this presentation. So we typically don't do an enrollment update in the fall. We move that forward in the middle of year, January or so, after the October count has happened and been finalized, and Glenn Segru comes in and does a real thorough analysis of the movements within the district and from out of district and all that. But it really was pretty important to bring this forward tonight, just as a knowledge building about the process that we go through, as well as where we are right now. So this slide is just a little reminder of what was adopted within the budget. So we, we built the budget and planned on a drop of a little over 200 students. So we were kind of coming into that projected enrollment of about 200 students per year for the next few years. So what happened, this happens every year. So when we start August, we have twice a week data polls out of the enrollment system. And once a week, we do a thorough analysis with the data that comes out, the enrollment office, and what enrollments are in process, both withdrawals and new enrollments. The planning office, Glenn Segru, reviews his projection and what the data is telling him. And then the budget office includes a little status on the staffing that is associated with those students and where we are in meeting our projections. After Labor Day in September, we move to a once a week, and again, do that analysis of where we are, where, you know, it gets very consistent typically after Labor Day. That's kind of the, the magic day of when folks from other states maybe have moved in and, and have thought that school doesn't start until after Labor Day. So we move to that once a week. And then in October, it's just data cleanup. We have the 10-day window, five days before and after the October 1 date, and then all that data is cleaned up and submitted in November, which is why Glenn does his enrollment review later in January. So these next three charts are ones that we have done for a number of years, and they really show a, prior to this year, consistent pattern of what happens at each level as we start the year with some enrollment. It's the 1st of August-ish that, that, that we start that. The enrollments tend to climb as folks come into the district, or a lot of kindergartners are getting enrolled. And then we sort of peek out at the end of August and do some data cleanup with students that are in the system and haven't shown up yet after the start of school. And then for, at the elementary level, gets pretty consistent through the, the end of the enrollment period in October. So the black line in the middle of the chart here shows our projected enrollment for this year, and the blue line down at the bottom is what has happened over the last two and a half weeks or so. So we didn't even start at our projected enrollment, and while we typically climb, we have declined since the beginning of August. At the middle level, a very similar trend. Start, climb through the end of August, and then level out with pretty consistent data through September. We have our projected line there, and again, we started below the projected line and dropped. It has flattened off a little bit in the last couple, or last week or so, but definitely not at the level that was expected. At the high school level, we did start above the projected enrollment, so we had about 175 or so more kids than expected. It has not climbed as usually happens. It's been fairly level. And at the high school level, we typically see the decline in enrollments as. as again, students don't show up or students move, uh make other choices uh through uh the end of August and September. So all of that leads into um creating some budget pressures uh for us. We all know that uh enrollment drives funding. So as uh parents, families uh have made choices, uh other educational choices, whether it's homeschool or private school, uh there's been uh disenrollment. So um actual students unenrolling from the district. And uh we have seen a this dramatic shift uh from the in-person and home learning uh enrollment to Boulder Universal, uh our online program, where uh the projected enrollment at the elementary level for this year was, I think, two students, uh maybe zero, uh and uh we have uh over 300 now. So uh a a pretty dramatic shift uh in that to that online program. Uh, with staffing, uh that uh loss of students uh creates some challenges with staffing uh as we uh shift those uh available staff between levels, between schools, content areas. Uh, certainly that uh creates lots of challenges with um programming at schools. Uh, and then uh as was discussed uh numerous times or early in the meeting, uh that temporary reassignment of staff um where the function is in present uh with fewer, no students or home learning. Uh, so the bus drivers have been helping with deliveries and uh we have the parent educators and some the service staff that are supporting the childcare programs. Uh, so we've uh had to shift people around uh to to fill needs where we have them uh as well as provide work uh where we don't have those roles available. And then some of our uh specific uh accounting funds uh that are uh fee-based, um preschool, athletics, food services, community schools, uh they're built on uh collecting revenue for various things. Preschool with tuition, uh we did make the announcement that we're not collecting uh tuition for the preschool program while we're in the home learning. Uh, there's been a significant reassignment of the support staff out of preschool into the childcare program uh to help um mitigate some of that uh loss of funding. Athletics, as decisions are being made around whether uh sports are happening or not, uh athletic fees does support about a third of the athletics fund. Food services, obviously, if we're not uh running a full uh food service delivery program in the district, that creates some challenges and uh efficiencies while we're doing the uh distribution of food uh as we have done all summer uh and starting up for the fall. Uh, it's not the same as providing a full uh program in all our schools. And then community schools, uh again, while we're uh running our childcare programs, uh they are not running at a a break-even uh proposition. Uh, and we're also not able to rent out our facilities like we do uh normally to um community functions, churches, uh various groups, um community uh sporting events, things like that. Uh, so that's uh creating some challenges there as well. So uh as we move into what the projected enrollment is, again, this was uh data as of Thursday night, so the Friday data poll last week. Uh, so uh a drop of almost 560 students at the elementary level, about 129 at middle, uh and uh almost right on target at the high school level. Uh, to note here, across all levels, the online program, Boulder Universal, has seen an increase of approaching 1,000 students uh above what was projected. Those numbers included in each level uh that are noted above there. Uh, but uh just a a significant shift uh from what has been uh the the history of Boulder Universal. So uh per people revenue, uh just noted here uh that we have our School Finance Act revenue uh after the budget stabilization factor that was adopted uh by legislature. Uh, we do receive the 25% override on that. Uh, I have a little note in here where the online funding is a little bit less, uh about $600 less per student uh in P P R uh than a traditional uh student. Uh, so as we see that shift, uh it's not a significant amount of money, but there is a shift uh in what's available uh as students uh move into the Boulder Universal program. So just some basic math, uh 1% drop in enrollments, about 300 students, which is about $3 million. Uh, and that translates into about 12 fewer teacher F T E and fewer support staff, parent educators, things like that, uh that uh would translate out of our uh standard staffing ratios. So just for the timeline, uh what's coming up, we have the third quarter state revenue forecast uh towards the late September. Uh, we have our reintroduction plan information item uh with the board uh as to what next steps are uh with uh which phase the district will go into. In October, data cleanup around the October count. Uh, and then in November, we have the governor's budget coming out on Monday, the second uh of November. Uh, so that will give us both the revenue forecast from the state in September uh and the governor's budget, uh kind of an indication of uh where uh legislative council staff and the Office of State Planning Budgeting uh think we're going to end the current year, uh which would be an indication of uh potential recisions uh in the mid-year uh or if things are on track uh from what the the last projection was uh that was done uh in June. Then in December, uh the fourth quarter uh revenue forecast. Uh, and then in January, uh our revised budget study item uh would be the first meeting in January. The legislature starts on the 13th uh of January. Uh, and then the uh budget adoption for the revised budget on uh at the end of January. So um again, with the legislative session coming in, that's when we would start to get information uh around uh the supplemental budget uh at the state uh and any changes that are being made there uh or being proposed. So with that, that's the end of the presentation.
Okay.
See if I can get back to. There we go.
Okay. All right, uh, Richard, any questions?
Uh, just a a quick question, um, Bill. We have, we have our budget pretty well set till June 30th of 2021, right?
Um, well, it's been adopted, yes.
Right.
Um, go ahead.
Uh, if there's. Are we, are we, are you projecting any, any, any cuts after school starts or? Are we, are we gonna be looking at any, anything like that?
Um, there will be adjustments that need to be made. This is a s- fairly significant loss of students uh from what the budget was built on. Uh, we do have uh staffing reserves that were a a significant portion were for kindergarten. Uh, we did not, we only staffed for the students that were enrolled uh back in the spring. So we held off on staffing. Uh, so we have uh some uh expenses within the budget that haven't been allocated yet. Uh, so those can be pulled back. Um, the the uh funding formula within the School Finance Act does have uh averaging uh for funding. So uh if you're a d- district that's going into declining enrollment, you do not experience the direct straight-line loss of funding that would be uh tied to the same number of students because it averages over five years what your enrollment count is. So that uh helps to soften the blow uh in the current year. Um, it does pose challenges for years further out as well. But um uh, you know, there, there are some adjustments that will need to be made in the current year. Uh, although we have uh strong reserves, we have um plans that we can put into place. So it's not um crisis mode by any stretch of the imagination. Um, but uh we have a lot of information that will still be coming into us um in those revenue forecasts and the and the governor's budget in November.
So the uh governor's budget. Um, I don't know, maybe, maybe Kathy knows this, the, but the uh. Isn't there gonna be s- some kind of a referendum on on taxes that the governor has supported? Or do you know, Bill, uh, that means like it's gonna be like about $150 million shortfall or something like that? And in the overall budget on that?
Probably a Gallagher uh repeal.
Oh, I think the fair tax is what he might be asking.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh-huh.
I don't think, Richard, the governor officially supported it. He talked about it favorably was the nuance that they're reporting.
Okay.
But the the Gallagher just prevents cuts. If the fair tax measure passes, there'll actually be budget cuts at the state level.
I'm, I'm not sure it would affect this year.
Okay. Oh, the tax cut one that that made the ballot. Oh, that's right. Okay.
They, they kind of lifted the fair tax language and put it on their own.
Hmm.
Yeah. But that wouldn't affect us this year, you're saying?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Uh, anything else, Richard?
No.
Okay, Kathy?
So Bill, when do you think we would know if there's gonna be mid-year recisions? Would it be after the September forecast? Because they're gonna have to balance the budget in January. So my favorite terms are negative supplementals. Isn't that what they call them? So that, I think, could impact our budget in ways we don't have any control over.
Yeah, right, absolutely. Um, the, that September forecast will be a a a good indicator of whether the state is on track um from what the expectations. I mean, the, the expectations were lowered significantly, obviously, uh from what came out in December and and March or the first forecast in March. Uh, so if the state is still on track uh with that forecast from June, uh then it's um uh there shouldn't be a recision. Uh, if it's not on track, that's where the concerns would start to be raised. And then certainly, the governor has to deal with that in his budget uh with um, you know, what his beginning balance, so to speak, uh for the 21, 22 year. Uh, so that'll be a a strong indicator as well. And and what tricks uh he can pull out to to balance the budget. Because there was a lot of one-time funding at the state level uh to to balance the budget in the current year.
And we'll get, I have budget questions, but I'm gonna wait till we have a budget presentation and that'll, we'll get one next month, right?
Yes, I think that's on track for September.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Donna. Um, I, I'm looking at the slide, Bill, that you gave on the amount of uh P P R and the uh override. Are there other financial impacts that B V S D would realize due to the decrease in total program funding that's caused by the fewer number of students? For example, are mill levies for transportation operations and technology, are they tied to total program funding?
Uh, those are not tied to total program funding. Uh, transportation is tied to uh prior year transportation expenses uh and what gets levied uh with that mill. Um, we're uh doing some research on what the potential is for 21, 22 if we have limited or no transportation expenses uh in this 2020, 21 school year. Um, so that's a, again, that's a a future year um potential issue. Uh, and then the um operations and technology override, uh that's a uh fixed mill amount. So uh there could be some challenges with that uh depending on what happens with uh the Gallagher repeal uh and how much of an increase in uh assessed valuation we see uh in uh in Boulder.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Kitty?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. Um, so the P P R for kids in Boulder Universal is a little bit less. And is that because it supposedly costs less to educate them? Or why is that?
It's the legislature's infinite wisdom that they chose something less.
If a student were to transfer from B U back to a regular, their regular school, well, one, I don't know if they're, we're gonna let them do that, but if they did, would we just be out that portion of the P P R?
Uh, unless it happens uh before October 1.
Okay, so if that semester, for example.
Correct.
Okay, um, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Lisa? Okay, Stacy? All right, thank you so much for giving such a good view of where we are and some of the challenges that we might be heading into. So thanks for keeping us up to date and thanks for giving us a preview of the next meetings that we'll be talking about budget. Um, all right, if everyone's okay, I'd like to press on with the consent grouping. Everyone okay with that? Great. Um, so our action items are 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, August 11th, 2020, Regular Meeting, 7.3 Acceptance of Donation, Woodyer Elementary, 7.4 Approval of the 2020, 2021 Out-of-District Agreements. Are there any items board members would like to pull? Okay, seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Stacy, second by Kathy. Um, any questions about the items on the consent agenda, Kitty?
Yes, I'm curious about um the Woodyer donation. When um they talked about raising money for specialist classes, does that mean, well, it doesn't mean paying the, because that would be a teacher, right? So what, what is that? Do you know?
Kitty, I can look into that and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. And then it also brought up another question I had in general for P T Os who are, or P T As who have um raised money to pay paras and then were not um in, they're not in schools, so they're not paying the paras. What happens there? Do they just keep the money in their account until there is a time that they will pay the paras? Or do they have to, well, I don't know what, I don't know what I'm asking. Does anybody know the answer to that?
How about um Sam, get back to you on that one as well?
Thank you.
Awesome. Sorry for committing someone. Okay, uh, with that, any other questions on the action, on his uh consent agenda? All right, hearing, seeing none. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so our last item are the Casby Resolutions. That's the Colorado Association of School Board Members. It's a Nash, uh statewide professional organization. We pay membership dues to to get uh professional development and also work on statewide advocacy. And every year, they pass resolutions that we as a state, school boards across the state, get behind and hope that we can influence our legislature to change. Um, so Kitty and Kathy, do you wanna let me know, let us know what we need to do?
Well, I have um one resolution I'd like us to word smith and vote on at the next meeting, which is a resolution that is against using public dollars to favor private education, given what it appears to be is the Republicans' agenda for the upcoming session.
Okay. Um, and then- And then you bring that back to the next meeting? Okay, and then, and then I'll work with Kathleen to see if we adopt a resolution, whether we vote or whether we can do it just by a thumbs up and nod of heads.
Every year, we go through this, trying to figure out what we're supposed to do.
And I just have some, oh yeah, Kitty, go ahead.
Oh, I have a question of how we come to our resolutions because it seems like we always have a packet of here are our resolutions. But I don't ever remember getting together and writing them. One thing that I would like to see again is to push for repeal of Claire Davis.
Okay, that's probably in the, is that in the packet? Yeah? Do we have the packet?
Our packet?
Yeah.
Or CASB's packet?
CASB's packet.
The only thing that, that I've seen from CASB has been what we have here and what we got today, the standing resolutions.
Right. Yeah, we should probably talk about that. I just have some feedback for CASB. I think there are just far too many resolutions. And I think it's an unrealistic list of things to pursue with any kind of meaningful way. So I wish we could pare it down a little bit and, and maybe focus on things like funding.
We talked about that delegate thing last year because there were a bunch of resolutions that were similar.
Uh huh.
Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me we kept resolutions that were similar instead of, well, you have to get agreement from the districts who submit them in order to, like, consolidate them and rewrite it. So I can't...
So the, the problem, Tina, I agree with you. And I advocated for even trying to prioritize the 50-some resolutions that we had because it's impossible to advocate for them, is you can't stop districts from submitting them.
Yeah.
But I don't want to be one of the abusers, so I would like to keep our resolutions pretty, either broad so that there's room or very tight, like Kitty said, a very specific one, but not submit very many.
Okay.
I would agree with that too, because there are way too many.
So the other thing is, when we go through the resolutions, there might be resolutions we don't support. Would we indicate that next week, next time we meet? Would that be?
Well, we won't have them in time. We'll have those after everybody submits them and CASB staff puts them together and then we'll get to see them to give Kitty direction. That's where we also get confused as to what our process is.
Okay, so we're going to submit new ideas now, look at all the ideas submitted by all the school districts in a few weeks from now, at which point our board will decide whether or not we support those 60-something resolutions.
Let's hope it's not 60. But I think what I'm hearing is there might be three from us, which I don't think is excessive. One around funding, one around private education, and one around Claire Davis that we could vote on when we meet in two weeks.
And if you think of anything else in the interim, you can email Kathy or Kitty and let them know that you have another idea. And also, if you want to look at the, does everyone have the resolution book from last year?
I don't think I do.
If, if we can get that to our newer board members, Stacy and Lisa, so they get an idea of what is in there, that would probably be helpful. Although Stacy's on CASB now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Doesn't necessarily mean she has it.
Okay.
I was just going to say that I don't have that.
Okay. Let's find an old copy and distribute it to everyone so we all get an idea. We're on the same page of what we're talking about and what kinds of things are contemplated. And then advocacy through CASB is one avenue for change in our state. We also can act independently as a board and we have our own lobbyists just to remind everyone that that's an option for us. And we can talk about it, we, and we'll talk about that when we go through our legislative platform in a month or so. And that's when we review our own, our personal interests that are more specific to BVSD, although they do include some fairly broad resolutions and priorities. So that's that. Any other questions about the CASB resolutions process? Okay. And then the last thing is agenda setting. Any burning items that people want to put on agenda setting or have we got enough to deal with? Okay, hearing none, I would love to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all. Bye-bye.